I have six thirty, a call meeting to order. Agenda amendments, we're, I'm informed, we have done tonight. And there are no additions or deletions to the preorders as yet. First order will be the collect board minutes of December twenty, two thousand twenty-one. We have a motion, a second to discuss.
I make a motion to accept the Wollingford Select Board meeting minutes of December twentieth, twentieth, twenty-one. My second.
Do we have anything we need to change, alter, remodel? Hearing none, amended question, all in favor of the minutes from the twentieth, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? The pay orders for January four, two thousand twenty-two is thirty-six thousand, seven sixty-one and seventy-four cents. I'm told there are no additions. Do I have a motion, a second for Mr. Ughir?
I make a motion to accept the pay orders in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cents.
A second. Do we have anything we need to look at, change, alter? Hearing none, I'll move the question, all in favor of pay orders thirty-six, seven sixty-one, seventy-four, say aye.
Aye.
Sandy's noted a couple of things that are worthy of putting on our honorable mention. The residents of Nash and Circular Dry over the Christmas holidays had contributed their past practice of lighting candles along the roadway. Secondly, Ozzy and Linda Mercado made a nice donation to the food show. It was a monetary. Lisa and her family, Donna, Donna Hume, routinely pick up trash along Route one forty east and other roads in the town. On December seventeenth, they filled up an extra large bag in about thirty-five minutes. Kudos to them for taking the time to do it. I'd also say that it's probably to our displeasure that it has to be done, but we thank them. Rogue Commissioner?
Well, not a whole lot, no good news tonight. We're down to just what, one ton per sander. I haven't found out what the issues are. There's a shaft gone in the fourteen, and in the sixteen, I just got a message on it, there's major problems, so I'll have to go back down tomorrow morning and find out what's going on with that, see if we can get that up and running, because without those, we're kind of slowed down on our plowing process, too. So I think you'll probably have the fourteen back together tomorrow. The sixteen, I'm not sure what's wrong with that.
I would've known, I saw John's car there, the sapper.
Oh, yeah. So I don't, I got it when I came home tonight, it was out galling today, so I got the message. I talked to SLC, or South Lawn if you're Crestone, today, they went up two dollars a ton right across the board on everything. So that's gonna put a little cut into the pocketbook of gravel and sand. So, and anything else, there was, I've heard no news on the Vanwick Bridge. I sent them some more paperwork again this morning, the state of Vermont, still haven't heard anything back, so I don't know what's going on with that. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot. I didn't have any issues with the storm, and I don't think anybody did in town, I had no calls. One Christmas Day was a couple of calls on it, but nothing major at all. So, but I don't know if anybody else has heard anything, I haven't. Other than that, I think all is good, few major little issues.
I spoke to Rose over the weekend. I know you gave us a ballpark figure for around three hundred thousand for a grader.
Yes.
Obviously, it would be in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, which we'd have to improve this year.
Yeah.
And I'm probably gonna need Julie's input on this, too, but I'm assuming we need to put away a down payment on that. Have any of the people you've talked with indicated how they'd like to arrange financing for that? I'm assuming when we get down to it, it'll probably be over a five-year period, but as far as what we're looking at for, for budgeting for a down payment, if three hundred thousand and twenty percent would be, what, sixty, sixty K?
Yeah, it would be under three hundred thousand.
It'd be under three hundred.
Three hundred was the high limit in the evening. I've only talked to several film on it, cat. Nobody's around during the holidays down at the other places, so I didn't get any information. I'll try to get all that this coming week, so we have it for the next meeting. I don't know what cat does, but John Deere has a five-year, zero percent financing. So I don't know whether that pertains to towns, I don't know why it wouldn't, I know contractors it does, and I think it's just, you know, a percentage of whatever the down payment is. Then you can finance a restroom for nothing.
Is that the place where you're operating?
No, that's Nortrax in Springfield, Vermont. They don't sell graders up here, that's just small equipment up to fifty series excavators, as big as they go.
Okay, you want to send a van out from the factory?
No, no, it'll be Nortrax out of Springfield that'll do that. And then there's a case dealer, which would be, I wanna say is in, still in Georgia, Vermont. I think that's where they're out of, I'd get a price from them and stuff. Other than that, I don't know anything about the financing part of it, or down payment part of it, other than roughly six months to a year to get one, so, you know, it's something that, if you're gonna budget it for twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, it would probably, you know, if you ordered it sometime in the near summer, it would be in by then, I would think. That's something I would think they could nail down a little bit closer, but maybe.
Do you know anybody in those dealers that will give you an idea that if we were to order around, I'd say probably somewhere around two hundred July, when the, we come into the next year, what kind of timeframe are you looking at for delivery?
I can ask them, I'm sure they should be able to come up with something.
Yeah, I mean, I know years is a long time now, but.
Yeah.
I think the way things are being produced right now, up here, the shop just got his truck and been on order for months.
Yeah.
And that's like Ford, and they're commercial on TV, they're even saying, special order and you'll get it quicker than.
Yeah.
I think they're probably all in about that same boat.
Yeah, there's certain parts and pieces they can't get. Like if there's more information on that, within the next couple of weeks, we could happen with it.
It'd be good, just that we're, we're kind of getting close to needing to know what we need for the, for dumping. I realize we're looking at the article that's gonna go on the ballot, or on the warning, which I believe we came to, it was two-thirds for capital improvements and a third to remain.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, that is one story, but I think we actually need to look at budgeting it.
Okay.
Is everybody pretty much sure of that, or?
Down payment, yeah.
Oh, that doesn't feel.
Yeah, I don't have anything else, I don't have any questions.
Public comments? Julie, I think you're going public here tonight. Building news request, Nan Dubin asked about using the second floor of Town Hall for a candidate forum leading up to the town meeting, and then Sandy asked what we'd like to do. I don't know where to go on this, as with everything. Obviously, we're keeping our audience fairly small, we're staying six feet apart. I don't know how many people come to a candidate forum, but if it were a successful one, I would think it would be unable to get six-foot spacing, and at this time, we really don't know what the masking requirements are. You know, that's one of the things that was really not brought up when we're discussing recreation. But you know, it's a broad field, but I mean, they're looking at, well, Sandy's once-a-month thing up here, the conjurancing that was going on up here, a lot of that stuff is inside. You know, it's great to get a rec director right now, but as I said, I don't think this is a year that we can do all those things, because we really don't know where it's going. It's as possible that we'll be in these same restrictions come December of next year, as it is that we could be out of it in March.
Do we, do we say to Nan that maybe her best bet is to set up a Zoom meeting for a candidate forum? How would we, I, I don't know, I haven't been involved in these in the past, and I'm not quite sure what the rules and regulations are, but maybe you could host a virtual meeting with the, only the candidates and a moderator here, and do the rest of it through, through Zoom? Have people be able to manage it from, from that aspect, maybe? What do you think, Julie? That way you wouldn't have anybody, you wouldn't have to worry about the distancing, you would have a very limited amount of people actually here for the meeting, and then you would let people call in and run the meeting in that fashion. And that way we don't have to worry about the masking and everything. People can do what the Town Hall asks for, you'd have a very limited number in here, and, people, the public would call in, and then they could either write comments during the meeting, or they could take a call, just an idea. We've been doing faculty meetings, sometimes our faculty meetings have been in the building, but we've all called in. We've done it from our locations.
Basically, though, you're looking at, have the candidates here? They'll be filled in later, then.
Right. But.
For the next meeting.
But that's what's gonna come in, in next year, and is that after we take the money out?
When is the?
No, it doesn't come due until December of twenty-three.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this will be the last year of the six thousand? The same thing with this grant.
Overweight permits, two fifty. Green Mountain passports, fifty dollars. Grants awarded.
That's just a wash, you can't budget for it?
Okay, that wouldn't be affected by the grants they're going for over in the conservation?
We don't want forgetting it.
Yeah.
So we can't budget for this. It'll go out in expenses, so whatever comes in, we should put out.
Is that what you know, what, what we get would, would be spent?
It's in the overhead.
Land use reimbursement. Summer rent program.
Good night, Bill.
Nice job.
Summer rent, we brought in twenty-seven hundred this year.
Do we have any figures on what we brought in?
Twenty-seven, ten.
Twenty-seven.
Did the financials?
Oh, it's at a record. Thank you. So if we run, we can budget that amount?
The cell tower, that's a set amount. Nineteen six fifty. Elton Lake Gate income.
So what was summer?
Yeah, what was summer?
Summer recreation.
Forty-five, forty-five. What do you want to put in there? We brought in twenty-seven hundred this year.
Twenty-five, maybe?
And then Elton Lake, we brought in sixty-two hundred.
That's not bad, six thousand, maybe?
Okay, same thing.
Do we get anything from Redfield advertising? I know we still got the sun.
I sent out a bill, but we didn't run out anything last year. So we're gonna go back to Elton Lake concessions?
Yep.
We brought in almost twenty-five hundred this year.
Oh, wow. Do we want to go up to twenty-two like we did the year before?
Twenty-four, twenty-two, then?
How much?
Kathy, I thought you said twenty-two?
Yeah, it was, it was, there was a budget of in twenty twenty-one of twenty-two, do we want to use that same amount this year? Since it made a profit.
So I just wanted to help the Town Board to get six thousand, like, five, four, five, four, seven, and then twenty-two hundred, four, five, four, eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Got it, Steve?
Did you say anything on the Redfield advertising?
I just want to leave it at zero.
Yes.
Zero, okay. Donations, they are gratefully accepted.
Are we budgeting anything for donations? That's a really tough one.
Zero.
Zero.
I, I think with the years have, we just better look at zero for now.
No, no, no.
Hopefully get some. Communication group income, it's on your back page, forty-eight hundred.
Yeah, we need to talk about that in the next one, Wollingford Day, what we want to do here. As far as articles, or do you just want to fund that? I just don't know.
What do you mean by articles?
So, so some of these accounts that we have, these, we're never voting on the way they should be. So I think carrying forward these balances is the same thing, so I don't know. I mean, the, the ladies do bring in money, we get donations for communication, you know, for the newsletter.
Right.
They do the auction, so I'm just worried, you know, do we, I want to get these all straight, so right now we have a budget, income of forty-eight hundred and expenses of forty-eight hundred.
Okay.
And if we have any excess, what do we do with it? Do we just roll it into the budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Or do we open a reserve fund and vote on it at, at time?
Well, then we start with reserve funds for every single thing you could think of.
Just roll it over into the general budget?
Yeah, I think, I think.
Or do we just have it in the budget, and at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Whatever's left goes in the general fund, and we start over again?
Yeah, I think so, because we're, we're basically supporting it as part of the general fund.
Okay.
And hoping it brings, hoping it brings in, you know, the contributions and the expenses, but it's part of the service, I guess, of the town.
All right, sounds good.
But that's the, that's the communications, right?
Yeah.
What about Wollingford Day, what were the?
Same question.
Yeah, did, did they have a carry forward?
Yeah, I mean, I, wait, wait, no.
Hey.
They have, well, twelve thousand eight is what they have in income, and.
Oh.
They have sixty-one hundred in expenses, so.
So that's this year?
Is that also ninety-nine? Sixty-one dollars and ninety-nine?
It's, it's under rec expenses, fifty-eight, sixteen, those are the expenses, and there's twelve thousand eight hundred.
Right, so.
In things, so you do the difference. You know, what happens to that at the end of the year? Some of it could be spent, but.
There's still some more stock in the group?
Well, I mean, if Wollingford Day, like, if they get the ten, June, the border body or things like that.
Right.
So, so their profit was about thirty-eight hundred, did you say, Joe?
Right now, their profit is six thousand, six sixty-four, oh, two.
Okay.
So June first, say that's what they still have, what do we do with it?
Say, rolls into the general fund.
I don't know what's in the general fund.
And then you, so then you're just gonna fund?
As I say, what did we, did we fund it or not? I thought we zeroed that.
I'm thinking the first year.
Zeroed it.
Yes, we did. We did, okay. That's what we did.
The first two.
Yeah, okay. So is this income then, that's shown here, part of the rollover?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not necessarily all this year's profit?
Oh.
It's an accumulative profit?
Because they, the first year is when they really did the.
They really had a lot of money.
Advertising and.
Okay.
We budgeted sixty-seven hundred for the year.
Well, that's just, I was just putting in what we.
What was that?
The difference between income and expenses, you know?
Got you. So what do we want to do?
This really wasn't a town function initially, was it?
No, it wasn't.
To, to me, we should get out of the banking business, so these activities that are not.
The five K and the, of the Wollingford Day.
Yeah, they're not a town function, I mean, then we wouldn't have to deal with this.
Was it because of the insurance?
Yeah, but you can get event insurance, real estate, I mean. I think if an outside professional auditor was to come in, they would question this. I know the fire district, who would have issues with this? I forget what they were doing, but it was something similar, and the auditors stated that they shouldn't be doing that.
So I guess, what's the question, Joe? What happens to the excess from June thirtieth? Well, you know, we're, we, we had that underneath the rec budget. And, you know, we're also talking about that, we need stuff done at the lake and things like that, and I'm just, I don't know if that's something that makes any sense, using up the, using it up, because at, at, at the end of the year, I think it needs to go into the general fund.
And then you'll just fund Wollingford Day going forward? Not put anything in that income and just use it as an, just expense for it? Because I don't see that kind of money coming in again for, you know, advertising or, it's a lot of work.
Yeah. Last, that, last year we had the big fiasco with the rain, right? But it still did end up making, it still did end up making a profit, right?
I'm not sure how, unless they went to back to the, the first year that they did it with the, having vendors and people donating, a lot of companies donated.
We've got sixty-seven hundred in there, where do, um.
That's just, I took the income we have now, and what the expenses are, and just kind of made it a wash, but we need to decide. We could put zero for income and just fund it out of the general, or we could go on a reserve fund.
I don't have a quad here, I mean, in my mind, it, it wasn't our money to begin with, but it's like, how do you give it back, because something that's been put into the line isn't... I, I don't agree with the reserve fund, I mean, we have to stop now with reserve fund.
So basically, the sixty-seven hundred is the difference between what we've got in as income so far this year and expense.
I'd say whatever's left at the end of the year goes into the general fund.
Yeah, I would say go with what this is, then they can use up what they accumulated, and then after that, goes into the general fund.
So should we put zero for income?
And I can lose sixty-seven hundred, right? Sixty-seven hundred is.
Well, if they ran it this year and they had sixty-seven hundred.
Because I was thinking that's the carryover, but if we can't use the carryover, next year we'll have to put zero, right, and then just fund it?
Why can't we spend the carryover?
It would go to your.
Because we'd have to establish a reserve fund, and you don't want to do that.
That's why I say we should get out of the banking business in the first place.
Okay, so how do we get out of the bank?
I don't know.
But zero for income is no income's gonna come in.
Okay, because we're talking about a year in advance.
Yeah.
And tell them to spend that money.
By June thirtieth, or?
Yes, rent the tents, prepaid the potties, pay for the fireworks, whatever.
And then going forward, just funding expenses, or just to cover under expenses, if, if that's a function you want to fund.
Or they should just create their own account.
I think they needed the tax ID, and they needed that.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Yeah.
They couldn't make, yeah.
I, I agree with you on this, Karen.
Yeah, what, do you think that, zero for income and sixty-seven for expenses?
That's gonna be still.
That's gonna be next year.
Next year. Next year, right, so we gotta have the sixty-seven.
But this year, they've got like sixty-six hundred dollars left.
Right.
And maybe they won't even touch that sixty-seven, I can't imagine that they would.
Right, so we can't put, we, we don't want sixty-seven next year for expenses. They've gotta use it by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so then June thirtieth of-
Twenty-three. Zero.
Is zero, right.
Their expenses should be zero too, then, right?
So everything's gonna be in place by June thirtieth and paid, is that what we're saying? And then going forward, you can just, the next budget, you can decide whether you wanna fund it?
It could be something, the same, the same rec program or something like that, a thousand dollars for Wallingford Day or something like that.
Right now, you've got sixty-seven hundred dollars, there's an expense in there, though. And that's tax money that'll get collected, unless we change it.
Where is it, particularly put it in it?
Well, we haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't got there yet.
We're gonna take it out, put zero.
We just have to get rid of the revenue there, right?
Yes. So we can have zero then, income and-
Thanks.
And expenses? And use what the excess this year for next June to pay for Wallingford Day next year?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's anybody that's gonna do it, I mean, you know, that's gonna-
So before you move on, can you just let me know if I have a decision on four-five-five-three and five-four?
Four-five-five-three is the same.
No laughing now.
Five-three is the same and five-four is zero.
Say that again?
Five-three is the same and five-four is zero.
Okay.
Over now. Well, now's the hard part.
So we're leaving Communication Group at forty, and we're zeroing out Wallingford Day revenue?
Yep.
And we're not, no, and we're not creating reserves for either?
No.
No. How about five-five and five-six? Are we doing anything with that, or is it still zero?
Zero.
Okay, admin, admin turn.
I think revenue would be for-
Yeah.
Start right there, zero-zero, auditor's side bends. Do we have two or three auditors? We're supposed to have three.
We need three, but our help doesn't take it, they just take a transfer station card instead. So one-fifty would work.
One-fifty. Select board's side bends. Do we get a raise?
We deserve it.
Yeah.
After this year, we deserve that.
I tell you, this year, we deserve it.
That's mine, I believe.
Actually, the project committee gets more than we do now.
Do they? That's not very good.
The voting tells a raise last year.
We still did, so... Uh, Fire District, oh, they gave themselves a raise, oh. We've been good, I think we need one now.
Right now, you're all at a thousand, I get eleven hundred. Is that where we want to be at? Fifty-one. Assessor clerk salary, that would be yield, right?
Yeah, for the cat across that thing, in the such and office, yeah.
So Sandy and I talked about that, we thought we would reduce it to two thousand, because right now she's at two-hundred-and-twenty dollars for six months. So... It's never gotten that high, you can see what, uh, last year's was.
Right.
Okay, she's still paying her regular clerk, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Assessor expenses, this is also something you've done, gone with John Fifty, right?
Yes, they, they were, yeah.
And so, pretty much, we're setting what you've got, seventy-two fifty, uh, the sixteen fifty, uh, the eighteen four- Eighteen thousand four hundred.
Right.
And the twenty-nine three.
That's the total of Assessor budget.
That brings us to the town administrator's salary. Where the heck do we put that? You included a copy of the south current salaries, did you?
Yes, yes, yes.
That don't really do with it.
What do you want to do, Johnson?
We had a form that gave all the salary.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right in front of me. Over the weekend, I spent some time going through VLCTs. You can see the book there, the wages and compensation package. They list twenty-two different town administrators in there. Uh, the lowest page is from the town Lowell. She only works seven hours a week and she makes fifteen forty-five. Of the remaining twenty-one administrators listed by VLCT. Sandy is the lowest of the twenty-one left. The town admends administrator gets twenty-five thirty-three. The town of Farrelly pays their administrator twenty-six seventy-seven. Every one of the other town administrators makes at least twenty-seven. Uh, and actually, there's some that make over thirty an hour. I think my point is we're not paying her enough.
We know that.
I don't know what it would come to, but I think if we actually looked at pay or what the lowest... Well, what the median is, it's actually, the median average is twenty-eight ninety-five. I think we'd be in reason if we looked at that bottom figure, twenty-seventh. Do you have any comments from anybody else on the board?
We need to get her up.
We do.
We do, because she is really an asset. And so is Jill, and Jill.
And Jill, they're all?
Yep.
Under there? So how do we wanna?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking if we could compute it out at the twenty-seven. That was what I looked at as being the lowest paid of the, the town administrators. I think it's a reasonable number for the work she does. Do I have any other commentary from anybody? Are we agreed with on the twenty-seven, though? She certainly deserves a raise.
I agree.
By consensus, or?
For how many hours? I mean, I'm dividing this, this salary here by the hourly rate, and I'm coming up to eighteen hundred and forty-seven hours. So, um, do, do you not work, is that, do you not work forty hours a week, Sandy?
I work, I work thirty, thirty-four to thirty-seven hours a week, depending on-
Oh.
The week.
Okay. Okay, I was just trying to figure out, calculate what it would be as a, as an annual.
Let us do it.
Are we all, can we agree on the twenty-seven? By consensus, Sandy, the pay rate for the administrator will be twenty-seven.
Okay.
You can use that to calculate it out. Where do I go from here?
What did, um, Jill ask for as clear, there's a, I think it's down to there. And Jill also look at Jill as well.
The zoning administrator? Uh, let's see. There at nineteen thirty-eight. I think probably, right now, we should probably look at it general overall. These are all two, three, and four percent raises.
Yeah.
I think probably, the other one we really need to look at too is the assistant towns, aren't those with Jill?
She, she made a request.
Pardon?
Jill, Jill made a request, there's a letter from her someplace, I don't know if it was on email or in a packet?
Yeah.
Okay. I always saw it.
Well, she, she included a note to us.
Yeah.
That she's not making, what, I think it was four-seventy-four an hour when she started above minimum wage. And... No, I don't have that one anymore.
Oh, I have it right here.
Any, anyhow, the assistant town clerk, or the, yeah, treasurer, I looked them up in the VLCT too. And again, she's right, I think she was actually the lowest paid of the, uh, part-times. Uh, the mean average salary for town clerk, assistant town clerk and treasurer was eighteen oh one an hour.
Eighteen oh one.
And she's making five, fifteen seventy an hour.
Yeah.
Again, I think if we go to the mean average, it would be a reasonable... We brought the truck drivers and stuff into a, a range last year. I think at this point, you're looking at she's barely making above the minimum wages now. I would suggest that eighteen oh one an hour, uh, to the board.
Is that what they asked?
Again, I don't fit to your feelings on that. She only asked for sixteen, so...
She asked for sixteen eighty-two, what if we raised it to seventeen?
Do I have any other comments, or are we gonna agree on that? Seventeen? I couldn't hear you, but, so what do you say, seventeen?
That's, that's what I said, she asked for Nelson was saying eighteen, she asked for sixteen eighty-two, what if we raised it to seventeen? Knowing we need to go in this direction.
Not to change the subject, but how much are we paying lifeguards and the people over at the lake?
Uh, I believe the lifeguards are twelve or twelve fifty. Going by VLCT, generally speaking, lifeguards are in nine fifty, no, nine sixty to twelve fifty.
I, I just would like to see Jill get higher than the summer help, I mean, I'm, I, they need to get paid, but Jill's here all year round, and I think she deserves-
Our supervisors over there, I believe, were making eighteen and seventeen fifty. I think the eighteen, the average is reasonable.
I think it's fair, if we're gonna pay them that, then Jill should also... I mean, she's year-round, I mean, these people are only working-
She's permanent part-time.
Yeah, and I, I, I just would like some fairness, huh? Well, part-time, full-time helping in that aspect.
Does somebody want to make a motion for the?
Okay, we didn't make a motion for Sandy, do we need to motion for that one too, or?
For who? We, we get Sandy by consensus.
Okay, but we need one for Jill as well.
We need one for Jill.
Yeah, we need-
I would just caution that we need to get this budget passed, and you know, everything's, it's gone up. I, I didn't hear what your motion was that.
I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you didn't.
No, uh, Bruce was making a comment.
I'm just saying that we need to be able to get a budget that's passed, and so far, you know, everything is going up and up and up. People are gonna come back and rebel. Vote it down. Fifty percent of the people in this town are retirees that are on fixed income, then. And I think if we go too wild with the budget, I don't know.
What would you propose for the figure?
Let's see, give her what she, she asked for. Nothing against Jill, but anybody that makes an hourly rate falls behind every time the state raises minimum wage, and... It's just a fact of life.
I take seventeen.
Pardon?
I go with seventeen, that this-
Seventeen what?
The seventeen that I said.
Okay.
Because it's only- Nineteen or-
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any force?
Does she have done that?
Nelson, what was the, what was hourly?
I mean, health or anything, no.
What's that?
What was the hourly in?
Uh, seventeen-
Seventeen, period, period.
Okay.
Do we move to a conclusion on zoning administration?
Nelson would.
Yeah.
Look at it as is.
Are we gonna leave it as is?
Yeah.
Do we want to move it to the two percent and nineteen seventy-seven, or just leave it low?
I'd leave the highway crew and the transfer station.
Oh, I don't think we're done with... We haven't finished yet with zoning administrator and town clerk and treasurer, we still need to look at those. I don't think we've finished the zoning administration.
Yes.
Administrator.
We've got the salary and expenses.
All the... The three that are in the highway crew, we've made a pretty good adjustment with them.
Um, right, do, are, are we still talking about the zoning administrator and the town clerk and treasurer, Nelson? Because I don't know if we've come up with final figures on those yet. Under the-
We, I don't think we've, we've gotten that to the end yet.
Do, do we need to finalize zoning administrator and town clerk? Do, do we need to finalize zoning administrator and town clerk and treasurer?
How about fifty-two hundred for the zoning administrator?
Last, last year, they submitted an actual request. Do we, do we have any idea what Erica's feeling was on it, if she submitted?
Yeah, I think if you, I mean, you have her hourly, hourly rate, you decide, um... If you're gonna do cross-the-board raises on the, on the others, or then we can, Julie and I can just calculate what we can put on that line.
Well, we've already given the road crew pretty good raises this year.
The road crew, I would look at it being very minimal.
Pat, if we did two percent on zoning administrator, is that around the fifty-two that you were saying?
Well, uh, nineteen point seven seven times twenty-one point five times twelve is fifty-one hundred.
Huh?
Nineteen point seven seven times twenty-one...
It, it's not really a guideline, but the, uh...
That fifty-one hundred is already nineteen seventy-seven an hour.
Okay, so why don't we just go, we can go without picking that?
It's not nineteen thirty-eight.
Okay.
So are all of these figures...
So what's your salary?
Fifty-one hundred.
Well, all these figures is all two percent then?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't divide anything.
How?
Well...
Take twenty-five times forty, times fifty-two.
Fifty-two thousand.
So all of these figures are...
So all of these figures are adjusted at a two percent increase?
Yeah.
No, no, like, are you looking at Charlie? No, that, that, that current annual salary is correct, cause, cause two percent would be twenty-five fifty. But zoning administrator says she's currently making nineteen point three eight times twenty-one point five times twelve is five thousand even.
Okay, then, that'll stay...
That's just an average, I mean, she, she, I think she's been playing it more out though.
Yeah.
One more time.
So do we say for fifty-one hundred for zoning administrator?
Yes.
And now we need to talk about town clerk and treasurer?
What's the zoning administrator gonna be paying? Uh, hundreds.
What would that be? I think that's the two percent, so it would be nineteen seventy-seven an hour, would it be nineteen seventy-seven an hour? Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so assistant town, I mean, town clerk and treasurer.
We just said assistant?
I mean, I, yeah, I backed off the assistant, regular town clerk, that one.
So what do we think for town clerk and treasurer? We have a two, the three, and the four there.
The two percent?
The two?
If you go into the VLCT, they do three different listings, they do town clerk, treasurer, then they do town clerks, and then they do treasurers. I find it interesting that when you take the town clerk and the treasurer into the same town, they come out a heck of a lot higher. Town clerk and, between their town clerk and treasurer combined, is almost eighty thousand dollars. If you look at the towns that have a town clerk treasurer combined with an assistant, they generally find that Julie is just about in the dead mid. I, I don't think it's even began to be fair room, but unfortunately, that's, that's the way the statistics are that I read.
So are we thinking of going with...
So what are you saying, Nelson?
What am I saying?
Yeah, what are you saying?
Said she's in the median or the range.
What's that?
Yeah.
What I had thought originally, I think we've addressed the ones that are really out of sync.
Okay.
The feds are looking at a five point nine percent increase across the board on social security. The state retirement is looking at two percent. So you're looking at, basically, government looking at how people are looking at cost of living in very different manners. What I'm thinking, if we look for the, either the three or the four percent across the board, for the ones that we didn't actually adjust, I would think that we'd be keeping fairly cl- or fairly close in mind with what other towns are doing.
What, what if we did three for town clerk treasurer and two for highways and they just got some significant bumps up? Highway? Are we giving them more, or are we gonna keep them at the average?
Well, yeah, let's just, yeah, let's, let's do, cause I wanna, yeah, cause the highway, I think, is a different...
Yeah.
Cause that was just a big change.
So, what do you think for town clerk, three, or? Yeah, three.
You're looking at three?
I was looking at two, but if you're gonna go three, three.
Okay. So I think, is there consensus on three for town clerk treasurer? Are we taking three for town clerk?
Three.
Okay, got it.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion for three?
Do we have to make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion?
I think it's just a consensus thing.
Okay.
Yeah, three.
Consensus.
Three consensus.
Julie figured out. Okay, highway, so when was Lori hired?
Three percent Sandy.
Got it, thank you.
Just a few months ago.
Yeah, when was Lori hired?
Just a few months ago, I think that's just...
For the end of September.
She's still on probation.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so everybody, they got those rate, oh, in September, yeah, so you're right there, yeah. Okay, so they just got those raises two months ago.
Right.
But we're talking about next year.
Next year. Are we thinking two?
Overtime, you'll compute that out?
Yeah, so we're doing two percent on the road crew?
I don't know, what, what's everybody's consensus for highway?
I don't know, I don't...
I don't think we should get anything. I mean, not... Charlie, we just gave him a pretty near a four dollar an hour raise. Steven gave him a two dollar an hour raise.
And, and Pat, those numbers that we have in front, in front of us with current salary, that, it's not like the ones above, that, that's the actual, right? Like the, um, twenty-five at forty is fifty-two?
Ooh.
Okay.
Is that Lori's probation salary and rate, and is she going to, when she gets off probation, is she getting a raise or something? Because that would bring her, I mean, you know, she's right at the, um, dollar underneath the supervisors.
Yeah.
I would, I would tend to, you know, think they just got big bumps.
What do people think? Do we level, do we go on the low end?
I don't know what I think.
Who do you think that? Level? I'm saying level two.
Okay.
I mean, just that.
We're, we're talking on, on the road crew, right?
Yeah.
If, if I went a year, I got nothing for a raise, I would be thoroughly yanking my chain. I think we have to look at least a one percent. I can't see...
Two percent, you mean, two percent?
With the road crew, I'd go with one percent. They had nice raises last year.
Yeah.
I mean...
Mm-hmm, I agree.
I think one percent says we still appreciate you at least, we didn't level fund you.
Is that, is that like, one percent?
That's a one percent for the highway.
Okay.
The transfer station? We did three percent on the others.
Are we thinking three? Did you say three?
Be my suggestion, we did three percent with...
Okay.
Wait. We've got Jim in our, both at fifteen thirty. And Jerry's quite a bit below them. He also doesn't have anywhere near the amount of time that he's always hard time. I don't know where we should be looking at budgeting on them.
I think we were talking about doing the three percent else among them, for three.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that agreeable? Three percent on the transfer station.
Okay.
I think we've gotten all of them.
What do you want, what did you want for overtime, road crew? What, what, should we level fund now?
What?
Didn't you say for overtime?
Oh, we, we got the, just on the other sheet, we weren't really looking at the main sheet, so we didn't do zoning expenses yet either.
Okay, okay, got it.
Road commissioner, stay up there. They had penciled in eighteen hundred.
Nelson?
That was this year.
Nelson, we're still up higher. Fifty oh oh four A.
Fifty?
Right. The zoning expenses correct?
She spent a hundred fifty-seven for the first year.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's three hundred, sounds pretty good then.
Three hundred?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah, we're gonna level fund now?
Yes. Okay, so we got that. Level two salaries, okay, road crew overtime.
Are we down to five zero zero seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
They did pretty good.
Labor district of road commissioner, stay up there.
We're still up at five thousand and seven, Nelson? We're still up at five thousand and seven.
What are we thinking for, for that?
Well, we, we... Bumped up everybody.
Yeah, you bumped everybody's bid.
Yes, so now that's...
Seven and a half is gonna really, okay, gonna be a lot more than thirteen four.
Maybe you could crunch the numbers and come up with something on that too?
So, five zero zero seven is kind of a guess of, you know, which storms, how much overtime they're gonna be working. We're, you know...
Well, if we put a, put a thing there, they kind of maybe look at it as a...
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, fourteen, fifteen thousand or something like that. Not that they're gonna get held to it because we have needed, they got to do it.
Exactly.
So we think it's fourteen...
We're doing good, no major storms.
Yeah.
So, we have bumped ten spot?
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yeah, just gave everybody a raise, so...
It'll come to say.
And we did give ourselves raises, now let's go back. Jeez, okay.
You decided on fifteen on that line?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, last year, at my suggestion, we gave fill-in pays. All the way eighteen hundred.
Are we down to fifty-ten now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thinking of a beautiful transfer station. And the assistant town clerk.
As much as he does for us, I agree.
Well, I know, that's what I...
Road commissioner, stay up there.
He, he was out there on Christmas Day that one year, but we did it, we got down. Didn't know how to call his wife.
So, what do we...
Tree warden, I don't believe we've ever done before.
Charlie?
We did.
Well, I didn't, but you decided on road commissioners' expense?
We didn't.
We didn't.
Okay.
Nelson's just rolling.
All right.
Do you think, you wanna give him a raise, or what?
Well, considering how much time you invest, and like, we're just sitting there going and looking at twenty-five dollars an hour. I mean, what is eighteen hundred dollars, I mean, I think it's like two hundred fifty dollars a month or something like that. So, what are we thinking, do we wanna do the eighteen or more?
Let's bump it to two thousand and...
I, that's what I was actually thinking, bump it to two.
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
At least it's symbolic to show we appreciate you.
Yes.
Okay, and the tree warden, that's true, because we've never done anything, and he, he does a lot of work, he's just doing stuff, even in this...
I think in the earlier budget, we put about thirty-two hundred in for tree work.
Yeah, for defender.
Yeah. Five hundred reasonable. For what?
What are we looking at?
For tree ward and stipend. Listen, he bill us when he does stuff though. That last day, that last day. We had a letter from him requesting twenty-five hundred for the, for the budget. And we gave thirty-two fifty. So, I'm assuming the salary would be, or the stipend would be paid separate of that.
Right, yeah.
Does anybody have any idea other than the five hundred?
I think five hundred is too much.
No, that's too much.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get it.
It's too much.
It's too much. It's too much.
It should be more of a honorarium type of a thing.
Two fifty? Okay, two fifty now.
Two fifty, got it.
So, the only tax collector should be eight thousand to match the income.
Right.
Eight percent on the first page, so change that to eight thousand, please.
Okay, got it. And then you'll do the other ones, right?
The next two I have to figure out.
Okay, and you also do the, oh, we've gotta do that one.
We got the insurance and power one.
Yeah. What about the fire warden, you go turn that page into insurance, is there any other?
So, there's two fire wardens, and they take transfer preparation cards instead of a stipend, a hundred dollars each.
Oh, so we can do zero?
We've been giving two hundred for a long time.
What'd you say?
Two, I said we've been doing a hundred each for quite a while.
But she just said that, that as long as we got the same two wardens, they'll do it for transfer station cards. They're easy. So, it's zero. Okay, so then we have to do the insurance. Sandy, on the, on your insurance worksheet, did you mean July first of twenty twenty-one on the top, first column?
I'm looking at, I'm looking, my, okay, first, July first.
But I, do you mean twenty twenty-one, like in the current? The current first six months we're in right now?
Yeah, July first, twenty-two. Since December thirty-first, yeah.
Because the insurance is on a calendar year, but we're on a fiscal, so she's estimating from July of next year to December will be that.
Well, I thought that's, I thought she said. I, okay. It says solid numbers for July through December, and I thought she meant right now, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Julie just explained.
When they're, when they give us that, like, we have to cross the rate for all of the twenty basis hours a year.
Okay.
July now, from July first of twenty twenty-two through December thirtieth, first of twenty twenty-two, those are gonna be solid numbers. And then the first six of twenty-three are all gonna be guesses.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, got it. So.
We don't need a motion or anything on this, it's just.
Right, it's her doing budget, how much is it?
All righty.
He said we know how to do it.
He's the ninety-six, five sixteen she's got in her shoes, isn't he?
I don't know.
Yeah, second half's a guess.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, one.
Okay. You got it.
The revenue augmentation trust. Pat, Tammy, Kathy, I think Sandy was in it too. Put together an article, the article five shall devote to the town of Wallford appropriate two-thirds of the revenue augmentation trust upon the date of its termination to be used for capital projects as determined by the select board, and the one-third balance to remain with the custody of the trust in public funds to lower future taxes. We do need to have a motion in a second and throw this one.
I'll make a motion excepted as ordered.
All in favor of that article five?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any vote?
Nelson? Did we ever design on a health officer stipend?
No, we didn't.
What was it, same thing?
We didn't.
Oh, okay.
We skipped something, Nelson. Five oh four one, health officer, it was two fifty.
Yes.
Do we want it to be two fifty yet?
Want to keep it at two fifty?
Two fifty.
Okay. Now you can proceed, okay?
All right. Okay, Julie, ask if you want any special articles on town meeting warning to establish funds for the bridge, building, cemetery, conservation, and/or rec. We have, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Basically, what are we doing? Just changing up some of the funding there?
Well, I think, I went back through the town reports, and I did not find that the zoo funds, they were, these were ever established. So. Each year, we take, if there's any excess, we take it and we put it in these funds. But. I guess they had it.
It's not corporate.
Done correctly from the get-go. The cemetery, actually, I didn't go back, but the cemetery fund was established prior to nineteen sixty-five, so. I don't know if that was done right or not. If you wanna assume it was. The highway fund, that was voted on, and the reappraisal fund, that is statute, so you have to put the money in there. So, I'm questioning the bridge fund, which we budget for every year. The building fund, which is the excess from the income, the cell tower income. And then the, the conservation. Unless you're just gonna have them use that up eventually, then the rec, then the rec fund. You know, come June thirtieth, the question will arise, what, if there's any money left over, should it go in those two accounts?
You include, you're pretty good, fine.
No, that's a statute, you have to have that.
Okay.
Fund. The town, the state sends us the money every year.
So, we have to put those as articles?
Right. Like we did the highway. We, we established that highway reserve fund a couple of years ago, there was a question. I mean, the bridge fund, you've been putting money in every year.
Yeah.
That was never established as a.
Not as a vote with the, at town meeting.
No.
It was just put in the budget.
Okay.
But it wasn't spent.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So.
It's never been spent, the bridge fund.
Right.
It was established, but.
Each year, it's been put in there.
Right.
To put it aside like a sinking fund.
Right, yeah.
But we never said, can we have this?
Right. So, I'd like to get these.
Well, the recreation fund is supposedly going to be gone.
Okay.
Right? By June thirtieth.
Conservation, they should just stick with it. Is that what, that should be rolled over into?
Yeah, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
I definitely think that the bridge, the bridge and the building, I mean, the intents of those are to, you know, accumulate and to be used. And we, if they're, if they weren't done properly, we need to do them properly now.
Yeah.
I guess.
And they think, no.
And the board is like, no.
Spend it.
Late.
Yeah, too late.
Definitely the bridge and the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the others has this, okay, I guess.
Yeah. Well, like cemetery fund.
Needed for the bridge.
Yeah, we've never used it enough. Are there things that need to happen at the cemetery?
Each year.
Well, yeah, but now that we saw that cemetery up there and how it could stand to be refurbished. Okay. And I'm wondering, with the conservation commission fund. So, we have this issue going on with Elfin Lake about setting up something for dealing with the erosion issue there. Conservation, don't they deal with things like that? No? I, I don't mean the, in a hornet's nest, but I'm just thinking we're looking at funds to put towards, they need, we're saying the conservation might, could we offer this as a suggestion? May, maybe to help out with this, seeing that it is, I mean, it's an ecological problem. Is that on the money?
Yeah, but the conservation commission has the.
Okay.
I would, I would, from the top to the conservation.
I wasn't gonna say it, though, but.
Wanna spend their money.
Well, I think that it needs to be brought up to them. They're just gonna brought up as, as just a suggestion, something to be looked at, not, not as anything that they have to do. But this going forward with the carryovers, um.
Yeah.
Can't, we can't handle it at the town level. And that, looking for things, maybe, maybe not exactly this, but something like it, might be a good use of funds if they're looking for ways to spend it then.
I'm sure if they get that grant, they're gonna need matching funds or something too.
That's right. But see, that's still gonna be.
It will be brought up.
Yeah, that's true.
So, do you need any more?
So, do we need to put the bridge fund in the building fund?
Julie's gonna handle that.
As an article?
Yes.
To make it legal?
Julie's gonna handle it.
Do we go handle that?
I work with Sandy.
Julie and Sandy will handle it.
Very good.
That's why they get the big bucks.
And what about the cemetery?
The cemetery?
That one?
Well. Julie said leave it.
Okay.
Cause we don't know where it came from and where, you know, and it's. It's seventy years ago.
That's quite a while, though, that's for sure.
Well, no.
It's not quite, we don't need that, too, but.
Yeah.
And then, um, the rec, record conservation, we're not doing reserve funds for those?
No.
No.
Got it.
Are we ready to proceed, Nelson?
Ultimately. Yes. Combined time long. Charge is made, whatever. Lori was not paid for Veterans Day. She also was not on the schedule for Christmas and Thanksgiving. I had Julie go ahead and pay those holidays, I took it upon myself. Our handbook calls for that to be a, sort of a six-month probationary period before we pay those. First, I think it's crazy that the only real veteran we have working for Wallford wasn't paid for Veterans Day. I also don't know of anywhere's that you don't expect to get Thanksgiving and Christmas off, particularly when you would be the only person working. Which in itself kind of questions the safety in the person working along. I, I told Julie also that if the board would not waive those three holidays and we paid them, that she could take it out of my stipend. I think everybody knows I normally return my stipend for, for whatever it can do. I would prefer to keep it that way, that we waived the, the hundred and eighty days. Sandy suggested that we consider changing the employee's handbook from the hundred and eighty days to sixty days. At first, I thought that was a good idea, the second, my second thought is there may come a time where we're looking at holidays. For example, Bennington Battle Day, or even Memorial Day, that may not, may not be as common to have off for Christmas and Thanksgiving. My thought was that we simply waive, in Lori's case, the probationary period and treat her just as if she had been employed through that period of time anyhow. I think that that would be a legal move to just waive it in the case of one individual rather than changing our employee handbook. And there may be a point in time where we would like to have that hundred and eighty days to look at a new employee.
I think you should separate the two items. I think there should still be a hundred and eighty day probationary period. But to me, a holiday pays is a benefit, and as far as I'm concerned, once you're a full-time permanent employee, or you're a full-time employee, never mind permanent, you get paid for your holidays. I mean, I don't have a problem with Lori getting paid for the holidays.
Is there, is there a reason why we have a probationary period on being paid for holidays?
It must be a policy some, one of the boards in the past established, but I mean, to me, to me, it's two separate things. The probationary period is determining whether you're gonna keep an employee.
Exactly. I, I don't.
The fact that whether they get paid for their holidays should not be connected to the fact that they're on probation, as far as I'm concerned.
Because if you have a probationary employee, if they don't meet the terms of employment during the probationary time, they will no longer have a job. I totally hear what you're saying.
That, that was the point I was trying to make, in her case, would waive the.
I think, I think the policy should change the handbook policy to to say that you, you, a perm, or a full-time employee will get paid for the list of holidays that are in there.
Exactly.
And that's it, take, take the hundred and eighty probationary language away from that statement. And that's it. Take, take the 180 probationary language away from that statement.
Yes, take out the word "permanent" instead of "full-time employee" will be paid for the number of hours that employee normally works on the holiday gone, uh, on the holiday, following, period. And take out the 180-day probationary period language. What does everybody else think?
With the holidays.
To take out that holiday language. To take out the words following their 180-day probationary period. That if you're a full-time employee and you can take out the word "permanent", you, um, you will be paid for the number of hours employee normally works on the holiday, period.
Does sound reasonable, Sandy?
Yes.
Yes.
Consensus on that?
Yeah, anybody?
Yes.
Go ahead, Sandy, that worked. We have the property map update agreement just signed. That's all we need to do, is just sign that?
Yeah, it's the same rate as the one we just finished up, so, you know, screen will be the same. And next year will go up a little bit, uh, as we know from what previously, it doesn't save money to skip a year. That's what, you know, our old was earlier, we skipped a year, we saved money, but it can rain doubles if we skip a year, so we'll save.
Right. I assume that's over on the table, you signed?
Yeah, that's just, I think that, yeah, that's for everybody to sign. Yeah, it's over on the table.
Okay. Town Hall floor refinishing.
Is this the same guy that did the downstairs, Sandy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's working, he, uh, we have a few different people doing some floor refinishing. He's done it a couple times. In fact, when he was downstairs, he, he looked at the upstairs and his, his suggested initially to just refinish the busy areas and not moving the furniture. So, I was a little surprised when he came by and gave me a price to all the moving the furniture, and then I reminded him that he had suggested just doing the busy areas, and that's why he gave me this price. I mean, it doesn't really make sense to move all the alumni. There's just not a lot of traffic over there, so it's an enormous amount of work, and there's just not a lot of traffic over there. So, I think just, I mean, if you look around on the floors, there's decent shade, but if we just refinish just the fans, I think that would be good.
That'd be $2,400?
Yeah.
Is everybody good with that one?
Yes.
And is the stairs, the stairs, the main stairs coming up?
Yeah, he, he kind of left those out, so I'll give a price with the, there's an extra...
Yeah, it would be nice to know what that little extra for the stairs is going to be.
Exactly, that would...
Forty.
Those, right.
Do we want to have a consensus with any particular allotment that we'll allow for the stairs to be done? I mean, it's $2,400 for up here. Are we looking at adding 500, so making it maximum 29? Or just whatever he adds on?
Well, it won't be done before the next meeting. We could just give a price.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just tell them we're going to move ahead with the partial, the, uh, the partial, the busy areas, and then I'll ask them to, I'll ask them to add on the stairs, and I'll give you a firm price of the, you know, the next meeting or the one after, whichever one gets back to me out.
Good.
Great. COVID protocols. COVID is a darn good question, I would think. I guess Sandy's question is, do we want to resume Zoom meetings, which would be basically the telephone? Does anybody have any personal feelings? My, my thought right off the bat is, we're pretty good tonight for an audience. We don't generally have a big audience.
I'd rather be in person that way.
I...
I can hear everybody, because when you're on the telephone, sometimes I couldn't hear people talking. And I'm that type that, I need to hear. So, I like to continue it as is.
My personal is to continue like it is.
Yes, that's what my consensus is.
Are y'all like that too?
Consensus?
The only thing we might...
I guess not, Sandy.
Okay.
The, the only thing we might want to consider right now is that there is a big spike going on of, of COVID. And it might just be good for, and, and I don't think a spike is going to last forever, but, you know, just that discretion of, you can use a mask if you want to. I know I will be using a mask right now. We've got it, um, COVID is pretty, we're, we're coming up with alternative plans for the next few weeks of school in case we have to implement them. So, I think just being a little bit more cautious over the next several weeks might be a prudent thing to consider.
I, I think generally what we're looking at, even what we're discussing early with Nan and stuff. I think if we can keep it reasonably within at least six feet apart, I think we're probably good for now.
Yep.
Okay.
One step at a time with that.
E-waste agreement. Again, that's just something we signed?
Yeah, it's just a one, it's an extension for another year, um, any due approval. It's just a signature from just Nelson.
You can sign your way.
Okay.
Are we good with that?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Again, consensus on that? Seventeen other business.
Well, we're going to go over select board comments and concerns?
I don't have them.
I just, I just have a question. The select board comments and concerns, are we, are we going to do that one before we go to other business? Have we done select board comments and concerns yet?
Yeah.
I just have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I know that we have a building fund. Is there any reason why we're not considering using any of the building fund money for the concession stand up at the lake? Isn't that a town building?
Gary sent an email to Sandy about that. I'm not sure what the general feeling is. The, I guess the same question I have now. We're looking to use up the recreation fund by the end of the year. That would certainly take a good, a good chunk out of it, along, along with the tennis court. And actually, I don't know who, we approved a whole mess of equipment to go ahead and buy.
Right.
Now that we don't have a rec committee,
Right.
who's buying all that stuff in, I assume it either come out of that rec fund.
Right.
My thought is that who's ever on the purchasing, uh, end of buying that, find out what's left over. If there's enough money to cover that, rather than losing at the end of the year, I'd rather see it come out of that fund. If there's not enough left in there to do it, then the building fund would be a good alternative.
I'm just thinking that if, if we do want to look at that information we just got today from Amy. Amy Picard who gave information on what we can do to help out. If, if we have a little bit of wiggle room with that building fund, we might be able to do whatever planting or things, we, we might be able to play with the money a little bit so we can address the erosion issue and the building at the same time.
Again, I think it's going to come down with what we spend out of the rec committee.
Yep.
And we really don't know what any kind of a plan is for, you know, that erosion. The lady retired that was going to go in.
We got information today.
She sent that email today and that's information.
Yep. And so, we should look that up.
Yeah.
Do, do we have any kind of idea what the cost is going to be?
She gives a, an idea of what we can look at for plans, and then we can look at what cost is going to be for those plans.
Okay.
Okay?
I haven't seen the email.
Yeah.
Yeah, it came out, it, uh, it, there was no cost, no, no cost, um, it was... There was no cost estimates included in her email. I sent all of you the, um,
Yeah.
She sent the plans directly to Rose, myself, and Brooke. I forwarded to Kathy, Pat, and Nelson, and it's all there, but there's no cost estimates. I really don't, but Julie can weigh in, too. I just, I'm not sure how we can stretch beach erosion into the building fund. I mean, I, I remember a few years ago, it was a little bit of a stretch doing upgrades to the town garage with the building fund, so I'm, I'm not sure if we could do beach erosion.
So, Sandy, what I'm saying was to use the building fund for whatever repairs needed to be done to the concession building? That would open up the money that we were going to take from the CD towards an issue like erosion. So, you would separate out, you would leave a little money aside that wouldn't have to come. You, you'd address the building with the building fund. And then you would have a little extra money from that CD to maybe address erosion. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I just think that, I found that at the last meeting when we additioned, you know, with $6,100 to the, the tennis court, you know, $4,000 something for the dock, and all those other purchases that kayak and all that. I mean, I think that's going to eat up $10,000 of the CD.
Julie noted, thank you. What about the, the two volunteers for the rec committee? Any comment on those, Nelson?
Who's the second volunteer? I saw Persuery on the sale. Who's the second one?
Uh...
Daniel O'Carney.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. Nelson?
Nelson?
Uh, I'd made a note here that Daniel O'Carney. Sandy's actually sent us what I would equate to a resume. He seems to be quite, quite knowledgeable and, uh, well acquainted with a lot of the sports activities. The other gentleman that she mentioned was a, I'm going to go try to pronounce that first, was...
Sumio.
Sumio. He doesn't seem to be so much interested in the sports, but he apparently has a music background.
Yes.
And, uh, he appears to be interested in doing research, work on different cost estimates and stuff. So, I think both of them are good, good candidates.
Okay.
I think probably on a day coming up here, is that the conversation we need to get into, what to do about rec. I know one member had mentioned that possibly not having a rec committee, I, I think we're going to have to take some time
Yeah.
to talk that over, where we're going. But certainly, if we do get a committee, these are two good candidates.
Right. Are we going to inform them that we're holding their names on file until we come to a decision on, do we need to contact them to let them know anything?
I suppose we could, at this point.
Well, it would be nice if Sandy would acknowledge the receipt of their interest and while we're doing budgeting and trying to decide a direction, we'll get that to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for their interest, but you know, just...
It's pretty much, it's pretty much common, Sandy usually takes a letter.
Yes, I, I noted my both on that, um, pass their, the cost of the sled board and keep them on.
Okay, thank you.
The, uh, John Tiffany has also sent us a memo on the near Gansett exemption. And it appears that they do not vote to be exempted on the taxes. And, uh, yeah, I did a letter for, for, Sandy wrote a letter for the municipal office. We also have a fire exception meeting Wednesday night, come up with the fire department's budget. Bill Wilson has no interest in being part of the building committee. Michael and Gail McCloud donated $100 to the conservation commission.
That was very nice.
Uh, Tammy Huffman will be joining us tonight, or next, next week, again, we're going to have to go over the meeting warning. Meeting will be over at elementary school. Hopefully, it'll be in person. Is there anything else? Motion to adjourn?
That's it.
I could.
Do we have a motion?
Yep, we did.
Yes.
And, and...
All in favor of adjourned?
Resign.
Hi.
Fine.